This is our study session for Monday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. This is for us to review a draft of our strategic objectives, which are part of our strategic plan. And I assume the meeting is going to be run by.
Yeah. And your staff.
Staff, okay, cool.
You're ready?
We are ready.
All right, good evening, everybody, council members, very good to see you all, it's been a couple of months, I think. But in the past couple of months, your staff have been very busy. And we've been working on the third and final component of your strategic plan, which is the development of strategic objectives. Remember, just for review, strategic objectives are the actual tangible action items that your staff will work on over the course of the next three years to support the four strategic priorities that you adopted a couple of months ago. And then those priorities support your vision statement, so they're all linked together. These objectives that we're going to go over were developed by your staff, that's why they're all here this evening, because I just helped facilitate the process, but they really own these. And so as we review them, if there's questions or anything, this is a, and how the staff will be heavily involved, and this is an opportunity to speak to, to the objectives they developed. The way that we did this is we had two sessions, I came up here, we talked about what strategic objectives are, kind of laid out what they're going to look like and how are we going to do them. Your staff went back and provided a lot of really great suggestions and, and they actually have a lot of, a lot of these objectives here, they actually already have a lot of good implementation plans, I think in place of good outlines for that. Then I came back up here, we did a objective by objective, line by line scrub, much like we're going to do this evenings. We heard that same process at the staff level. And the final outcome is the draft that's here for you this evening. So this is now council's opportunity to go objective by objective and look at them and be sure that there's, that you're satisfied with those and see if there's any additional input or missing. So it's kind of a dialogue between the staff and council. And our goal this evening is to hit save on what is your final, final draft of the strategic objectives that will go into your strategic plan. I'll come back here next week for your council meeting. And they'll be presented in a resolution, just like you did for your priorities and for your vision statement. And at that moment, you'll officially adopt these. And then your strategy is, is complete, you have the three major components. Then I just go back and package it all together and bring it back to you, you know, all packaged in your strategic plan. So this is a big evening, you've come a long, long way. And so I'm, it's really great to be here and be here at this point. And unless you have any other initial comments, Mayor or Madeline, we'll just go ahead and dive right in. So the way we're going to do this is just literally look at each one of these. The way that the strategic objectives are laid out here is that you see it's in caps, it has the strategic priority. And then each strategic objective has a number. So you see FHS one, right? So financial health and sustainability one. And so that's the, that will be the number that's attached to that objective for the duration of your strategic plan. So we're just going to go through these, I'm not going to read them out loud, but just, I'll just say, okay, FHS one, give you an opportunity to read it for a moment. Hopefully, you've already had a chance to look at these. And then if you have any comments, now then will be the time to ask comments or questions. If it's just quiet in here, awkwardly quiet, I'm going to say, okay, moving on to number two. And we're just chugging away until we get to the, if we get to the end. If there are corrections, I recommend we're going to try and do it right here, right here and there, get them done, so that when we hit save and I walk out of here, you have your final draft, there's no more iteration. So this is the true study work session this evening. Okay, you ready, Mayor? Good?
Fire away.
All right, here we go, FHS one, your moment to read through it. Okay? Going once? Okay.
I have a question.
All right.
It says the complete and independent financial audit and report results of the audit of the town council and public. But it doesn't say by when.
Beginning in June twenty twenty-six.
And annually.
And then through twenty twenty-eight, so every, every June.
So it's going to be.
That's what I understand that deadline, but worse.
Finance isn't able to be here tonight, but yes, that would be roughly the timeline.
Okay.
Based on when the audit typically happens.
It just, it doesn't, I'm just saying, it doesn't say that, so it's like within X amount of time after the audit's completed, shall be reported to the town council and.
It usually has a state deadline, so that's why there's June. Okay. So June and then every June thereafter.
Okay.
Okay. Number two. I'm seeing.
I know.
I was thinking that.
We're, we're going to go back and forth tonight.
Okay. For three. Okay. And number four.
Those two are.
Yeah. Okay, number five. Yeah.
Yeah.
I knew we were running into the police stuff. Well, you just wait.
Okay, five's good. Six. Okay. Seven.
Why does seven exist without any financial information? Like what, what seven's going to do from a financial perspective, given that this, this is the long-term financial health and sustainability, seven doesn't indicate what it's going to do from a financial perspective.
The sustainability of the IT security, and so we don't, I mean, that's not going to hap, we will have to understand what the assessment is in order to understand the financial implementing. Implications, gosh, trying to combine two.
I, okay, I guess I just don't see them, the way it's worded, where it ties into long-term financial health. Okay, I see. There's, there's life cycles on things, and so there's predictive end-of-life dates on, on hardware, so, and software as far as licensing goes. So from a technology standpoint, I would want to see it tied to finances, and I just don't see it in the way it's written.
Yeah. This is more of the IT security framework that is set up by CIS, where you have certain levels. The, the assessment of the talent and technology environment, I, I, I've done that for each department and provided them like into life of, of their, their desktops and their laptops. But I also put in Casell Advantage each year where we should do replacements. So I don't know if you could capture that in, in a small paragraph, all the, the yearly suggested, we should replace the backup batteries, this year we should replace the, the servers on this year. We should go to the cloud and remove everything out here on this year, I did put that within the financial plan. I just don't know if you could capture that in a single paragraph.
It would be pretty, I, I wouldn't recommend making it that as a strategic objective, that's something that you certainly articulate later, like I said, part of an implementation plan. I think the, the question here is looking, and that's why I scrolled back up to the, the priority here of ensuring long-term financial health and sustainability. So the question is, does FHS seven somehow contribute to that?
I think it provides a, I provided finance with what we need to do to be sustainable, both from our devices that sit on the desktops all the way to the server base and provided that in the, the financial plan itself with costs.
That's tactical, this is strategic, that's what I'm missing.
Well, I'm, I'm still missing the, there needs to be language in here. Like even public recommendations for adjustments to town water rates, adjustments to town service fees, capital improvement plan, things that are tied to financial forecasting and fi, and, and, and dollar amounts. This is the, the finance portion, so it needs to be reworded to talk to the, to the money.
Right.
Is there a financial savings in doing? And FHS? That's the connection you'd be trying to make here. I would think it would maybe come from the sense of, in, in that assessment of the technology environment, is there an efficiency that you're trying to create that yields a cost savings?
Because I know there's been reports every, every time you do a, a report, like even this last month's report, you showed a cost savings on reducing the licensing. I mean, they're looking for these efficiencies, but spelled out from a financial perspective, not the technology itself.
Right.
And if you don't, can't make that connection or it's a stretch, I regret, you may need to strike it out altogether. Doesn't mean that you don't, you can't still do it, just doesn't mean it rises to the level of being captured in your strategic plan. That's an option too.
Maybe we take it out.
Or just figure out a way to reword it so it looks like the other ones.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, the other ones are all finance department stuff.
I, I mean, I would like to see that then just reworded because we're talking about.
Well, we need to reword it now, then.
Yeah.
Can, can we not?
Is the assessment to create financial efficiencies? What, what, what is the, again, what is the? Identify key actions for implementation and standardization, so.
Identify key, key actions to maintain.
I thought this was more about the security part than, I mean, it's about efficiency, it's more about maintaining it as a priority in all of our minds, that the security of our IT system is number one, because that's where we're going to lose money, that's where we're going to lose systems, that's, and if we were to take it off, we as a group might lose, lose, lose focus on it, and we could lose big, big time.
But the verb has to tie that in.
But why does it need to be tied to finance? You need to be secure.
Okay.
Because we can, yeah, you have to be secure, you can lose your finance.
This, this whole section could be moved to someplace else in the document.
Exactly, not sure where.
Somehow you consider reducing the risk of financial loss, be another.
That might be.
Pfeiffer, that's, that's just added there.
Do we still want to say similar to that, something like FHS one, two, or three? Same, maybe using some way.
Yeah, I.
I think it needs to move elsewhere.
If it's a stretch.
It is. To me.
Let's highlight it, and as we go through the other priorities, if we find a better place for it, we can move it. But I'd recommend if we can't, it may be a stretch, and I would recommend just then just striking it out.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. All right, FHS eight. That's the two there. I think this is another one that seems, that looks to drive an efficiency, cost efficiency. As I read it. Anything? Yeah. Number nine.
This really pushes out our, all the work that we've done for beyond eighteen months. And I, I can tolerate June of twenty twenty-six, but even that seems like a stretch, I think we need to come up with something.
So I think we set a deadline, and if we were gonna, we're setting it there for a deadline, and we're going to try to get it done before that.
Yeah, so it's a no later than.
It does a couple of.
Yeah, no later than.
Yeah. I can't see it going that far.
Well, hopefully, it's, it's a no later than, it doesn't say you can't do it June twenty twenty-six.
Or next month.
It'd be next month.
Kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
June twenty-seven is absolutely.
I'd rather see a hard, I'd rather see a hard date than a.
I disagree with the hard date, because too many variables.
No, I don't know that it needs to have a hard date, but it just, this is so far out into the future, it can make the, the next board could just stay. I was hoping we'd get this done in the next twelve months, if that.
It's not saying it won't be done in the next twelve months.
I, it's just built, it's like built-in procrastination.
I, I would.
I like it.
No later than June twenty twenty-six.
When are we redoing this? When are we redoing these objectives?
Well, this, the plan goes through twenty twenty.
Goes through twenty twenty-eight.
So this is mid, so this is close to midpoint.
However.
We evaluate.
We will have opportunity to adjust with the council's approval.
Yes, Laura is absolutely correct. So if you, my recommendation is at least twice a year, you do a full review of how you're doing on each of these objectives. And at that time, if this one comes up, you see where you're at, and if you need to make an adjustment, you make an adjustment. Strategy is a living document.
Yeah, and I think we're all on the same page with this, that we would rather have it done sooner than later. So, yeah, periodic.
Can maybe, there could be some context, just so I can be comfortable with the timing as to how this item came to be written this way. And what maybe staff has heard from the various water entities that we've been looking at. Because I, for all the things that I've been in, I, I would not have thought that this would be a topic written the way it was.
What would you suggest?
Well, I honestly, I think we're on the precipice of taking it to council for a vote.
Today?
No, but I didn't mean we were hanging off the edge of a cliff, but we've been going to these meetings with, with.
There's only so many options.
Yeah, I mean, we've got two options.
Yeah, there's only so many.
Or three.
Well, we've, okay, we've got three and we've got a hundred sub options below it, but the point is, is that there's, I, I thought we were close, and this, the way it's written.
Well, we may be close, but we're, how are we going to pay for it?
When, when this was written, we were not where we are today.
Right.
Oh, still got context.
But a lot can change between.
Make it twelve months, make it December twenty twenty-six.
Now and then two, yeah.
And then December twenty.
We can change it.
Meet in the middle.
So it is worth getting into, I mean, and when you talk about your updates, set a date, and if you're going to miss that date, when you get your update, you change the date. You're just going to have to give an explanation at that point, right, to your council and the public of why the date's being changed, right?
I say June twenty twenty-six, because what this says is, we'll present a recommended option. We'll present a recommended option to town council.
I'd say December twenty twenty-six.
But it'll probably be.
Madeline, what do you feel comfortable with? Because I'm, I'm, I'm good, I'm good with whatever.
June of twenty-six?
Yeah.
Yeah.
More details, we need to work out some other options, but I think.
Okay. We are comfortable with June twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Got to update it before you.
Then we have more work in back.
That's right, that's parenthetical and invisible link.
She's going to be texting us from this.
Well, I think I remember during the staff session, it was considerable discussion.
She'll be texting us from the Himalayas.
It'll be a long time, actually, to get on a forty-hour flight.
Shaking video later.
Okay, nine's good. For now. Ten.
What water loss?
Yeah. Well, we have, generally, we have, the acceptable loss is below ten percent for, per AWA standards. We generally come in around between two and six percent with a couple outliers here and there for breaks or random things that happen. So, you know, we try to keep that as low as possible. So one of the things we would do was put more telemetry out in the field to measure pressures in different zones that we don't have remote technology that can measure it right now, that would be part of that. And then the other thing would be coming up with a plan to replace water line that we know is aging and needs to be replaced.
So where's the?
So you need two years for that phase to come up with a phase one plan?
No.
Is that what it said? It says December twenty twenty-seven, we'll complete phase one.
Imagine such fiscal issue too.
Well, yeah, so where is, how's this tied to money?
Costs money to do it.
Well, I get that.
Water loss, money loss.
But.
Is it, is that all put into the, is that put into the water?
We're thinking of the water. Let's hope it didn't need time to figure out, I guess it would come out of the water infrastructure.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how this is from the very top, where it says long-term financial health and sustainability. But how is, how is this?
Change the lifespan of the water system.
Okay. I guess I just wish it was worded differently.
How would you word it?
That's what this meeting was for, so we're open to suggestions.
Are you, you feel comfortable with that? December twenty-seven, that gives, it says no later than.
Yeah, I mean, no later than, in my mind, is good, because it gets, that gives us time to kind of figure out how we're going to do it and what kind of funding we would need.
And then complete the phase one.
Potentially word contracts, whatever, how much all that's going to cost.
Do you know how many phases are in, in that altogether, at least?
And watching these over the years.
Phase one might be one.
These dates. Yeah, I mean, it really depends, you know, how, what's going to go. What I've noticed over the years, these dates actually, they can be with the thing. Because they, you, you end up being a little over ambitious, and end up that the strategic plan loads it up in twenty twenty-six, and you end up going right past it.
You run out of time.
Yeah, so, you know, and that's why the no later than thing is there, is kind of saying it looks like, like the hard deadline is December twenty-seven, but they surely can get it done before that. And they're going to be providing you, again, at a minimum, my recommendation is bi-annual review. So before December twenty-seven, the water department will have come to you four times to give you an update on what the status is of this. And if you wanted to adjust it, then you could, but you do tend to see sometimes get yourself too short of a timeline. And at first you look at this, you know, that seems like so far from now, but boy, time flies.
Right, it's true. And you still got to have the funds to do it.
There's that.
All right, I, I can live with that one. There seems to be one department that's not included in this section.
Long-term financial health and sustainability.
I feel something.
Planning?
Police.
Oh, police, oh.
From a perspective of.
I could put something in there too, but you're going to say I wedged it in there, it didn't fit. I put my shit where it's supposed to go.
Water?
Well, he's going to write more tickets.
Water rate, stop it. When I look at water rates and service fees and things like that, we, we have fines that I think we would probably want to be making sure are similar to other municipalities when they're giving out tickets, if we give out tickets.
But the police department should not be in charge of it, fines are.
Um, the, the fee schedule itself is being reviewed each year, per the.
Right here, one, six.
Fiscal.
Okay, well, I mean, I don't.
You know, the police department fees.
Okay, so that is being reviewed, but there's, the, the whole department's missing from, from the long-term financial health as an objective.
I mean, PD kind of costs us a lot of money. There's not a lot of ways they felt like they could contribute to this particular.
Priority.
Priority as a department. Yeah, and I don't think we approached it as each department was supposed to hit each specific priority. We just, like the way that I wrote mine, I tied them to whatever I felt they were appropriate, whatever they linked to most directly, but I really looked at it as more near, where could you have the most impact? No, not that you had to be represented under each, each category. I think you'll find that police department, you know, as you walk through it, they have a lot of goals in there, or objectives in there, just not specifically under this one.
Right. I did the same thing, I kind of just sat down, we sat down and came up with our, what we thought were the priorities and then fit them into whichever category.
That's a good point, and those, those were the instructions that, that I advised them as well, of, don't try and cram it in, just to be sure you have something in each space. An important thing about these objectives is that, you know, again, the, the, these are, these are what you're putting in your strategic plan, as you're rising to the most important things, and that you want them to be achievable as well, and be able to stick. And, and resist that urge to bite off more than you can chew. Okay? Okay, next priority is strengthening community engagement, S C E one.
So on that, Madeline, is this, is this citizen service level group, is this going to, this core group is going to just keep staying as long as they want, or is this like an annual, you're going to put another group in place? Or just replace people as needed?
No, I, in the charter, I, I don't remember what it is right now, but it talks about how often people serve on this committee, but it's a, a long-term committee, we, we see helping us with, you know, service levels and finances for a while. So it's, I was just like.
Good people on there.
Correct, yeah, yeah, so I want to say the terms are like a year or two, maybe in three years. Um, I'll look real quick, it's on my website. Yeah, I can't remember what the charter says, but yeah. I will look, thanks.
Yeah, I'd like to keep some of them, for sure. Well, I'd like to keep all of them, but, you know, some of them are exceptional.
Correct, yeah.
Agreed.
Um, council members.
Did it this one?
Will we rotate the, the council in and out, is that the?
Two-year terms, it says, we shall serve two-year terms. That's it, two-year terms.
So the, the community could be forever, kind of thing. But we rotate the council members in and out.
Right, yeah, I mean, as long as the committee is useful to council and staff, we'll still keep, keep it in place, so when they stop being effective, then we'll revisit, revisit, reevaluate.
And because this one is a community engagement activity, even though it has a financial connection, I think it's appropriately worded, supporting its product. All right, number two, chief, there you go, there's a bunch of stuff. This is example, there are a couple of objectives in here that have some, some, some very specific things that they wanted to get done, that are tied back to the objective and to the priority.
What's the chief's advisory board, is that like a citizen group or a police group?
It's a citizen group.
Oh, cool.
I like it.
No quarterly bumping with the cop.
That'll be community resource officer duties.
That's, I'm seeing Kelly pretty busy with this last.
Well, so, I'm glad you brought that up, so you're probably wondering, why are we doing this now when we've had this in place? Well, we really haven't had it in place, because Kelly's been pulled all over with staffing changes. So with the budget package we put together, we feel we're comfortable to keep her in that position throughout the whole year to really focus on all of these things.
Just dedicated on that.
Dedicated on that.
Nice, yep, good.
She's very good at it.
She's.
The girl that every time she does.
Well, that's true, that's true. I'd agree.
Well, she's good.
Clone her.
Yeah.
The grown-up.
This definitely will be true responsibility. Okay?
Yep, that's good, that's true.
Yeah. Right.
So can I just talk about that real quick, since everybody's here?
So can I just talk about that real quick since everybody's here?
Oh, yeah.
Um, my chief's advisory board, if, can I have council members come along? I mean, obviously not, for them, but. If they want, okay. So I'll put that out when we're meeting, if anybody wants, I know they'd love to see. Yeah, they, they're great. So it's not like the C slack, they don't really have.
Yeah.
So what I want to use, influence as much as the C slack, but it's a great way for us to get information out to the community. But they're hungry for information and there's a bunch of great people in that too.
How do you do that, chief?
Quarterly.
Good. So what's like, there, cause there's gonna be a lot of interest, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Well, it's next week. So let's uh, like all work together so that it's got one or two at a time.
Cool.
We can do a council authorization item on seventeenth and you can ask for members or rotate them.
I, I, I don't think we need members, I just want them to come posing. Cause I'm gonna be talking about you most of the time and I don't really want you to be there.
We can take it, we can take it, chief.
I'm sorry.
We're pretty tough-skinned.
I know. No, they'd love you, they'd love you guys to be there. Madeline, you've gone there.
We just, but popping in has to, we have to be careful that too many of us don't show up.
Right, so I'm thinking if I send out the date, but you all.
Ah, good one.
yourselves and.
Yeah.
Maybe two. Get through, just got everybody in here. Get through everybody.
Thanks.
Got you, yeah.
Right. Number three. Anything?
Yeah, we don't need that one. We're not having an election issue.
Actually, you do a really good job with that anyway, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, we hope to do, you know, kind of expand on it and make it more in-person and give people a little bit more tools to navigate the nomination petition experience and kind of like a little boot camp about FCPA and that kind of thing. And then just give them an o, more of an overview of, and I'm sure we'll be reaching out to you guys too, what kind of um, information we give them about expectations, about how much time, you know, they would be dedicating to the task, things like that. And it would be good to have whoever's not running kind of be part of that too, to just, you know, talk about what it's like to be a council member. People get too deep, if they don't know what we're getting into.
Yeah, you don't just show up and vote.
They get you and me, Steve.
I know, that's hard next year.
Really?
All right, we good with that one? Sounds like it. S C E four.
Perfect.
Are we worried about?
He's not worried.
Cause we're gonna be able to partner with.
He's fine.
No, I think that makes it easier. Yeah, yeah, we're good. Oh, I thought you said you had an issue with that.
No.
Me as I was worried, because it's big, but I think we have the resources and the right, I think these is right now.
Good?
Yeah.
All right. Number five.
So how does that, how does that look?
So I mean, there'll be some things, um, could be like a touch truck program, where we can invite people, do social media outreach. Um, in the past, we've done videos to, that you just post like go over like snowplows or going over and you patch a pothole or how we do some parks maintenance. Um, there's a couple of different options that we're kind of bouncing around trying to figure out exactly what, how we want to implement it, but just better ways, so when we, everybody just sees us out on the road instead of calling and throwing their hands about, so we can at least give them a little bit of a heads up. In an educational way, so people understand why we're out there and the whole process of it, and that we're not just out wasting everybody's money, disrupting their traffic like they usually think we're doing.
So on some of our um, board uh, meetings for, you know, the town halls. And maybe, maybe if a department wants to come and do like a presentation, they could do it then too.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Hopefully we get more than one person show up and.
All you can do is put it out there.
I think Q three of any year is a challenge for people. Or Q four.
Good?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, S C E six. Seven.
Pretty big one too.
Whoa, yeah.
I think, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Porsha's got a good start on this though, so. I mean, that gives her through twenty twenty seven to develop and implement, and she's already been working on this, so.
So Porsha's the communication specialist?
Yes, she is.
She does.
Yes, she does. She's good.
And this one's good too, again, on that, that due date there to where, you know, by December twenty seven, you have heard about it at least four times. About what's happening, so. Right, number eight.
There would be another one to bring to a town hall.
Sure. Yep. It, it might be um, information, more information on our website too. Like, there's a number of different vehicles that we can deliver this information.
We definitely have it posted on the website.
Okay. E R D one.
What do you mean by uh?
Update development.
Development inspections, this um, random, randomly going through entire housing developments and inspecting water systems? Where public works?
Works.
Yeah, sorry, not, yeah, so roads, curb, gutter.
Yeah, so figuring out a good, ultimately just a way, cause like especially with the cartograph program coming up. You know, you can go through and you can kind of rate your areas and stuff, so it'll help us be able to actually get out and inspect them, have some documented inspections. But I mean, it's more like getting our crews trained up overall to do inspections, instead we just have one person that did those inspections. Um, now it'd be nice if we can at least have one or two crews that can go out and they can inspect different things. They're out in the field way more often, so let's just try to figure out a good program to get that going.
Cool, and obviously you'd be doing this in areas that we service.
Yes.
Would those inspection results be accessible or posted readily available online? For community members to?
We could, I mean, we could try to figure out a way to do it, it would be more for like our own information initially, but sure there's some kind of way you could put it out for the public.
Yeah.
I don't know about you guys, I get, I get stopped and asked, hey, when's the last time somebody looked at this or, or you guys, did you guys see that there's like this big pothole in the curbs broke or whatever?
I just wonder if there's risk about posting that, because then, you know, you're aware of a problem, and you post it out to the public and there's a little bit more liability than, you know, won't.
If they inspect and they find something wrong, then they should immediately turn around and, okay, now we have to, we have to get this fixed and it's in the pipeline to get.
Yeah, I mean, you create your priorities ultimately at that point.
Yeah.
And then that kind of goes along with your capital improvement projects too, so.
Yeah.
And they risk on track to be, you know, concrete come in one year, you don't want to go and put a bunch of money before, but, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yeah.
E R D two.
Yeah, this one's loading itself up.
Astronomically large. Especially given that it sounds like we're gonna be taking over some responsibilities that we don't currently have today.
And that's why it's no later than the end of twenty three, so.
No, I, I get it, and I appreciate you wanting to do it. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I'm, or have it as an objective, I'm just saying it's gonna be, this will be big.
Well, but it's pretty bite-sized. I mean, once we finish with the comprehensive plan, then we'll start looking at town codes.
Oh. So you're trying to get rid of the marijuana code, when I start.
That's not for me to decide.
Create them code.
I do think though, listening to you all though, that this one though hits that absolute sweet spot for where you were at when you selected the prior. Like this needs to do exactly what I heard you had in mind. Prioritized.
No, it's goo, it's good, not the way it's written.
Been without the Oxford one?
Oh, good gravy.
Seriously?
I'm trying to, I'm refraining, chief, I'm refraining. Cause you know I'm all about it.
Oh, I know, I'm gonna get it for Christmas in Oxford.
My bush, my Hanukkah bush?
Whatever floats your boat, we're gonna get an Oxford comma.
I can't wait to see it.
E R D three.
That.
Wow.
Wish we could do that.
That's aggressive.
It's aggressive, but I wish we could do it.
Too, yeah.
Yeah, but it's December twenty twenty eight, so.
Well, look, the chances of us winning the Powerball, someone here will win the Powerball, bring now in December twenty twenty eight, we should be good.
Do you have to play to win that?
Yes.
That's a requirement.
Go fund me, money.
I mean, we've already started on some of this um, work on the Semthee site, so it might not be, you know, the full public works facility, but there will be improvements to operations of maintenance facilities.
Good.
Yay.
Good.
Yep.
All right. E R D four.
I'm not trying to rush this one, is two years out? Is it, is there, is there um, applications, software? Helps expedite and make, make the process more efficient, that it could be done sooner than two years?
I think that we could probably move it up if we needed to.
Okay, I just, I'd leave the date alone, but if you see opportunity during the next re, review of this, I would think that there's probably a suite of software that just does this, right?
Well, I think a lot of this was supposed to be um, also business outreach site visits in coordination with the town manager.
Oh, cool.
Um, and then kind of the whole sales tax, self-collect would most likely be integrated where finance could go along, um, and to those, those visits.
Okay, so.
So I think as, we're looking a little bit holistically.
But it sounds like, and from reading this, a lot is going to happen. It's accomplished when it's, is that full implementation, which by the end, so you've done all the things, right?
But it's definitely something, you know, like when we do our updates in front of the council and in the public, we'll, we'll let people know of the progress we're making towards each of these objectives, right?
Yeah, that's specifically noted in the subjective, that that's part of the deliverable is providing those annual recommendations. Okay. All right, P W C one.
Will results of the employee survey be presented to council? As it's.
If we do, that would be the generalization like we did prior.
Well, I wasn't expecting you to give me the names of the.
I'm gonna give you the, the, the.
They said.
So is it, is it a? It's a by annuals? It says, uh, the wording is a little.
Because uh, we have it, the way that the process is, it goes in the beginning of March and then the beginning of September.
September.
Okay, so every March and every September, so twenty twenty six.
You would like us to add town council?
A version of the survey, or, or the results, not, not the same thing that you all use to gauge what you're gonna be changing from a policy perspective and course corrections, but something that gives us a generalization that you guys are projecting upwards and in your numbers, you know. Cause if you, if you, if you have one year of three point eight on something and it drops to three point three or three point two, or even a two, that could be significant move.
Yeah.
Hey, P W C two.
I get this one, it seems very interesting, you're gonna take over a metric district.
Do we have to? Should we add as a full bullet and other emergency services?
I mean, yeah, if you want to get more details, yeah, I mean, these are like our three big emergencies that we have.
I was curious, why are those three?
Yeah, these are considered like our emergency ones that we usually have to sandwich a lot of.
Gotcha, okay.
Good? And P W C three.
That'll go back to the very beginning, and pull that one down, and words move it in there.
There you go.
What's the title of this one? Positive work, well, this one's positive work.
Culture.
But I don't know, I guess I'm curious as to how artificial intelligence utilize, I mean, is it a cultural thing? I guess it is, right? Because it's your, you would be changing how.
It's become.
Yeah.
Special development.
Yeah, okay.
I'm actually gonna use I E to create a policy too, which is fun.
You're gonna what?
We'll use I E to create the policy.
So internal affairs is gonna create the policy on AI.
What I would assume with this one, it, you know, the, the deliverable on it is presenting the policy to council by the end of next year, and so I would think that it would be heavily influenced by the priority, how it's influencing work culture, okay, profession. Then, P W C four. Good?
No.
Five.
Same. I mean, this is stuff we expect, which is good.
Check.
Now, if it's things you're already doing, this just elevates it. E W C six. Good, okay. Seven. Good?
No.
And eight.
How long does it take to get accreditation?
Um, at least two years and one month.
I think if you actually started the process, it's about a year. Um, there's actually two levels of accreditation. One is through the state and one's national. This would be the state, state, state one. Monica Munt, our professional services compliance manager is an accreditation manager person. It's one of the reasons we brought her in. Um, and that was something she's really been pushing for, so.
What's the cost?
Um.
Can't be free.
Yeah, I, I'll have to look into that. It's not, it's not outrageous. I mean, most of it is. Um, work, we're going to be doing anyway.
Right, yeah. So you have to basically track it and report it.
It'd be like, okay, you have this policy, but can you prove that you follow it? So here's a form that we have, right? And we filled out the form. I mean, it's really what it comes down to. And then they'll look and make sure our policies are current and kind of, you know, traditional with other agencies and that one. Like cutting edge instead of just guessing.
Great. Alright, we're back to the one.
So back to the one, because I think it's really important that we have something in writing that talks about securing the, the network. So, so why don't you just add at the end of it?
I mean, I like to keep it here, um. I think when I first started doing the, the, this, this, uh, strategic priority is about long-term financial health and sustainability. And you, when you have an IT security framework that is predictable, repeatable, sustainable, you're, you're improving your overall costs over time. And one of the things I, I already started doing is, uh, CIS has a framework that they have you follow. And I've already kind of started doing it by, one, we standardized the network last year with standard switches instead of, you know, you name it, we had it back before and we did that. So this is just a progression of that sustainability. Um, and also with PCs, um, you want to have standard security setup. Now, our MSP provides us with that. If for some reason you were to say, we want to get rid of MSP and bring everything in-house, then we would need to make sure that we had standard software um, that provide, reduces the chance of having malware, um, phishing attempts in there. We're, we're meeting some of this already, but what I want to do is dig in and try to meet CIS's controls. Um, and in turn, it saves us money by having standardization. So that's kind of the reason why I kind of set, set it up in this area. Because in, in, in the long-term goal, it's about that predictable, repeatable, sustainable of our network reduces our chance of getting ransomware attacks that we have the software that, that's sitting on our, our endpoints where it throws it out there and identifies if we have one. Um, so that's kind of the reason why I put it in, in this area.
I think that last sentence about the IT security framework and reducing financial losses.
Right.
Bit in there.
Can I, can I give you, can I give you some text for this? This initiative will directly support the town's financial strategic objectives by mitigating cybersecurity risks, reducing potential financial liabilities, and ensuring cost-effective secure technology investments that protect public funds and operational continuity.
It's a lot of text.
Well, but it speaks to the finances and what he's trying to accomplish. It's missing. Uh, because switches and PCs and, and all, that is in the weeds for a statement that is supposed to talk about the long, long-term financial sustainability of the budget and the equipment that is being funded by it. And since you brought cybersecurity up, um, and the risk of financial liability, I wanted to make sure that that was tied into. I, I just don't see this statement speaking to the financial part of it as it was originally written, but if you don't like my statement, that's fine too. I just want to see something tied to generalization of the IT infrastructure and the cost savings that it's going to produce.
Agreed.
Okay. Cost savings.
Well, since we're allowed to use Copilot, I put it in Copilot, that statement, and it said, asked it to tie it to financial sustainability. It took basically what it already says, and then after standardization, it just says to enhance IT security, comma, reduce financial risk, comma, and support long-term fiscal sustainability. Which kind of comes, is not as directly, but um, it leaves, I think, broad enough that still.
Sure.
Um, enhance IT security, reduce fiscal or reduce financial risk and support long-term fiscal sustainability. I don't know if that is. Where would that start? Laura, where did you say it? Right after standardization. But I don't know if that hits the mark or not, but.
Well, that's true. Okay, we, Jimmy?
To enhance IT security, reduce financial risk and support long-term fiscal sustainability.
I thought it would have come out.
I was thinking of that one.
Financial sustainability?
Let's go.
Yeah, I mean, you're basically, the so what of your assessment is centered on those things. Right, on the financial side of your IT system.
But it wasn't quite as detailed as what Mitch said, but I don't know.
I think that the, that previous version felt a little bit too long, a little bit too dense. This is more succinct.
Fine. Better than it was.
Okay. Saved it. That was all of them. One hour.
Wow.
Okay. Any other comment? Congratulations. So you're almost there. You have one, and still do vote to officially adopt these, but I'll, uh, send these to you, Laura. Right, I just looked through them to see if there's any little tidying up. We've already drafted the resolution. So come back next Monday and present these to.
Oh, that Laura. Oh, okay. No, no, no. I'm like, wait a minute.
We'll present these to council. That'll be pretty, that will be a big presentation because you've done all this work. So I'll just say I'm coming back. And, uh, you reviewed these last, you know, just do a summary of what we did tonight and ask you to consider them and you'll vote. And once you've adopted them, you have your objectives and, uh, and then I'll be sending you very shortly, uh, by the end of the year, your final package strategic plan. But you, essentially with adopting this again, you have all the three core elements. You have your work strategy. So great work. And this is, uh, these are a lot of objectives because there's a lot of them in there that, that go every year, that they repeat themselves.
Well, but like you said, it's a living document, and when we discover that there's an overload, we can dial it back.
Yes, the key is the whole strategy is the accountability that happens. You're not, as a culture, saying, hey, look, at least twice a year, we're going to come and we're going to review this and do the work. We need a, either a study session like this or at a meeting, however you decide to do it. That's the principle of success. Is hold yourself accountable to getting these done or at least talking about them and saying, hey, it's not getting done. We need to make a change. We need to address.
Well, unbelievable job again by staff. Everybody putting this, their time and energy into this. I mean, I know it's a lot of work, so appreciate it.
Thanks for your help.
Oh, it's been my pleasure. Yeah, really grateful. Enjoy, enjoyed it. We've got have your vote next week and I highly recommend you adopt them.
Let's send it all back and do it over again.
Uh, and then you'll have your strategy. So, you know, and once you, once you adopt these and I'll send you the final package, you know, element of this and really getting it out there and I encourage you to really embed it into your culture. So, um, you know, some things that that Fountain has done, they took their strategic priority. If you go into the city council chamber at Fountain City Hall and they blew them up poster size and they have them up on the wall in their.
Oh, that's good.
So you can look at them. They post the vision, you know, the, it's, it's on the website. Your, your council packets, when you're putting together commentary, um, you put the strategic plan priorities up at the very front and if any, if that council agenda item speaks to one of the priorities, you check it. And so every turn, you're constantly coming back to your strategic plan. And that helps kind of embed it into your town culture. Makes it more effective.
Good.
Thank you so much, John.
You're welcome. Yeah, did any other questions at all?
Like a real town.
Still in the parents' house.
Yeah, of course.
How to figure out how to pay some bills.
Some of them are still getting paid. Alright, so we will recall this adjourned.